Yes, ma'am.
So I got, I got some home. I've been disabled since then, but I didn't let that affect me.
I'm trying to see how many new glasses I got. Still trying to see how many new glasses I got.
Well, you know, I turned that glass on and I couldn't see. I was about two, I paid three hundred some dollars for my glasses and now I didn't keep them a week. And it took so long, I had to go back for it because I had to work Lasik surgery. I got a distance and a close-up mic. And once you start going to read, now you can see. Once you go to read, they have a hard time.
I tell you, all of my life I've had two, three jobs.
I said, you know, just give me the kind that they have in Walmart. I said, I do about a one twenty-five and one fifth between there. And he was, I, then he looked at me straight. I said, I'm so sorry.
It left me, it left me in a resounding state.
I know you're a professional, but I tell you, but these works against us well and I lose it. I'm not being that kind of.
Okay. Once again, we're open our session for the city council meeting. We will be opening it up as usual with an invocation and a pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you again this afternoon, thanking you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Lord, as we begin discussing the business of our, our city, we, we pray over our city and all of our citizens. Lord, and help us here, city council as our mayor and administrator. Lord, may you just bless us with wisdom to pertaining to all of your, the business of the city. And may you be glorified in all things that, and decisions that we make. In Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you want to speak again? Oh, that was just for the.
Okay, okay. Okay, at this time, once again, we thank you all for joining us, recognizing all our visitors. We don't have any comments for, for this session from the audience. Anybody who has a brief comment that they'd like to make. One thing I will say that I'm so proud of the number of activities that we have going on in the city of Crockett, that we've had a lot of exciting events. And we just, we're glad of the support and we're glad that those things are taking place. We have, our youth are doing well, our community citizens, our streets are looking good. But some of them still got big holes in them, but they, I mean, they're working on them. No, but they're looking a hundred percent better. And as I like, I always like to remind, if you have a concern in your area, that's where you need to talk to your first line of defense, which is your council person. So feel free to call them and discuss any issues that you have in your designated areas. And they'll be glad to work through with you. And so with that being said, we're going to our agenda. Item number one, approval of minutes, regular session, August fourth, twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, it's been, we have a motion for accepting the minutes. It's been second. All in favor? No opposed? Okay. Item number two, our business, business, considering approved solid waste franchise agreement beginning November the first, twenty twenty-five through October thirty-first, twenty thirty, with Live Oak Environmental LLC Piney Wood Sanitation.
Mayor and council, y'all discussed the contract before. We had a few changes that we had put in there at y'all's request. And Denny and J D with Live Oak are here if you have any further questions. But it was basically the changes y'all had requested. And you have a copy of the contract in front of you, but they are here if you have any questions.
How do I want? The hours, are the hours actually working out for you guys? For us to.
About what time we start?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
It is working out. Okay. And y'all are getting completed for everything y'all need done by the time y'all supposed to be back at the.
Yes, ma'am.
Place where you.
Yeah, we don't have any issues with hours started here.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure y'all were good with.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
And we're fully set. Actually, we're a couple headcaps over. We're in for some time.
Okay. Now let me ask you another question real quick. What about like during the summer, out, the hours or whatever? Are y'all, what, what hours are y'all done through the, just say when y'all were, before the hours that we are talking about now?
Right.
What were your actual hours then?
Seven o'clock, right?
Six?
Six.
Six.
During the summertime or all the time?
Six, uh, we were starting, actually, you talking about before we.
Before we come to this, come forward now, this agreement that we're talking about.
At one time we were starting like at four. You got out of heat, but now we changed to six.
Yeah, that, that was one of my concerns because I know that, you know, starting late and as hot as it is, how, as hot as it get, the.
Most of all our contracts, regardless, we start on maybe six o'clock in the morning. Because any, but any time before that, the dumpsters and stuff, it is, they're asking for submissions, resistance.
So we're.
Now, uh, the commercial route, what it was.
They're different.
Okay. Okay.
Just because they, I think, parking lots and.
Yes, sir. I was just, I was, I mean, I understand that. I was kind of concerned about you guys working in, in the, the heat. Uh, if y'all could, I mean, if y'all were able to.
Good thing we're getting less with the pretty light turn so far, so that helps out too.
Okay.
We've got most of our people prepared.
Okay.
Uh, most of everybody that's in Crockett is basically veterans, so sometimes it's not really an issue for them.
Okay.
Now, the new guys coming on, somebody coming on right now, we got that after a month before we, yeah, go away to go by yourself. And we're still running two, three man crew in Crockett to give them to help out.
And when do y'all pick up the heavy trash? What days do y'all pick up like the big heavy trash?
Like the bulk tops?
Yeah.
Well, that's just in with your regular, our regular pickups.
If you, oh, you mentioned, you know, you can call in if you have some that specifically.
Like a TV coffee table, is that what you meant?
Yeah.
Something like that, maybe with.
Right.
Yes.
It's called in.
And then they get, it works to us and then we put it on the work order for the driver pickup. And we pick it up and roll the trash. As long as we know about it.
Well, um, thank you, Ms. Hicks, for clearing up one of my questions for hours of operation. And you said that your, most of your employees were veterans. Do you mean veterans of service or veterans of?
No, I mean, when I say veteran, veteran employees, senior employees for us.
Okay.
Uh, we had, I don't know, probably about at least half a dozen or more of them were veteran. So veteran JDs were veteran.
Okay.
We had about six drivers who were veteran.
And so the question I did have was, um, other than hours of operation, your hours of service. So say someone calls me from my precinct and asks me, what time is trash pickup on such and such street? Is there a time that I can give them for like hours of service other than hours of operation? Just like, you know, other than just a day?
I mean.
Cause I have some.
Always get a hold of JB or Tim.
Okay.
And say, hey, where, where does this particular area, what time?
Right.
Are we dealing in?
I'm just, I was.
We can give you a, a pretty much within an hour figure, but.
Okay. I was just worried about some of the older residents that I have that, um, aren't able to maybe, you know, put trash out the day before or maybe the day of, they have some assistance or something of that nature. And maybe wanted to get it out before truck comes through or something of that nature.
And then we still do offer the handicap service.
Okay.
So if somebody has signed up and let us know that they're in handicap and they go through the city, then we know that we got to go up to their doorstep and pick the trash.
That's great. Yes, sir.
I mean, we may have to go up to somebody's garage and grab, go grab a stand, dump it and return it.
You know, when you use the term veteran, one of the guys told me, he said, yeah, those are young ones. He said, now I'm a military man. It doesn't hurt me. I know how to lift them. I said, okay, well, go on then. But he was talking about how, how hard, he said, it is a hard job.
It is.
He said, he said, but I prepare for it all the time by being prepared for it. He said he works out.
Whether you're a driver tech or loader in this business, you got to.
It's a hard job.
There's no getting around to it. And we're not a big corporate company where even for me or JD, we're going to drive trucks, pick up trash. It's just what we do. If you can't get your hands dirty at this company, you can't work here.
Thank you for your service.
Pickup time change just a little bit because it's on the streets getting worked on.
Yes.
Just a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Yes, sir. Thank you.
But we can always give you, if you call and ask, we can give you within an hour.
Okay.
As long as that truck doesn't go down at some point where we have to come back in and get the spare truck or we have to go out on a road call.
Okay.
We'll be with there within the hour or what we should be.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you any other questions concerned? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank y'all.
So we need to.
Yeah.
Okay, can we get a motion? To approve the franchise agreement?
Let's see.
Item number two.
A motion that we approve the solid waste franchise agreement. Do I have to state the days and everything too? Okay, beginning November the first, twenty twenty-five through October the thirty-first, twenty thirty, with Live Oak Environment LLC Piney Wood Sanitation.
Okay.
I'll say it.
It's been moved in second. All in favor? Motion carries. At this, excuse me, at this time, we bring us to item number three, public hearing on proposed budget of the city of Crockett for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year. And during this hearing, it will be open and you will be allowed to have conversation. The budget hearing is officially open. If someone from the floor would like to have it, it's open.
And mayor and council, this is a time for public input, of course. And just as we discussed at the last meeting with the voter approval rate or the proposed voter approval rate that the council did, the budget is based on that. It's been out front and posted and the biggest, the forty percent increase in our streets for redoing streets next year is the biggest majority of the increase for this budget. So, but it is a time now for the public to have input on the, the budget figures if, if they do wish to have their time.
I'd like to know how much the insurance went up. Did it go up in this budget or not?
It did go up in this budget.
To be a, a large increase?
Yes, ma'am. It was, what was the percentage?
It's broken down in each.
Yeah, it's broke down, but it was.
Liv- liability was, uh, property insurance, uh, was, property insurance was fifty percent and our liability was forty percent increased.
Probably nothing could be done about that because of all the lawsuits, but just want to focus on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Does anyone else have a comment? This is for the budget hearing, if you have one.
Um, well, I was looking at, at the budget. I've been trying to look at the numbers. And I'm seeing on this that I got today.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and, and the proposed budget workshop that I, worksheet that I got from John, and some of the numbers have changed. And I haven't, and I just got this today, so I haven't been able to actually go over it to make sure. But I see that, um, like, the, uh, current taxes, there was a decrease? In the proposed current taxes?
From, I'm trying to figure out which sheet you're working off of compared to.
Well, compared to the one that I was given, um.
In the actual budget workshops earlier?
The one we got, I think we received what last meeting? Um, it was proposed budget worksheet for twenty twenty-six. And I'm seeing some numbers that are just a little, different in numbers.
I see what you're, that's the, uh, it's the, uh, the one he had before he revised it.
Right, that was, so that was with the no new revenue rate, yes. And then when y'all, y'all voted for the proposed voter approval rate at the last meeting, there was adjustments made to that. And the one that we've had posted out in front of city hall is the one that you have in front of you from tonight.
So with the new, the voter approval rate, was that the one we were getting the one, uh, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars over?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what this is?
Yeah, that's this, this.
Well, that's what I got as well. So he revised it?
Yeah.
The one you're holding up is the first one. The other one is the new.
Okay.
This is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
The one with the red.
Okay, so when, when did you, when, when did y'all do?
After the last council meeting, when y'all proposed the voter approval rate, that would adjust the total tax dollars. And then, so we had to put the budget together based on that number.
So when I come in and the thing wasn't ready or?
No, ma'am.
Okay, um, and just, I mean, I guess, you know, trying to ensure and looking over the numbers and looking at everything. I was looking at the, and I was asked a question about the debt that we had.
Yes, ma'am.
So the question, I got all my little papers up here. Um, the question is, are we, um, sixteen, approximately sixteen million dollars in debt?
Yeah, that's about right.
Okay. So with that being said, and our revenue that we're getting in is about six billion? So the question to ask you, if all those debts were called today, would we have the monies to pay off those debts?
Not this year.
No. There are fewer people.
You make payments.
Now, if, now, if they were called, if.
Well, why would they be called, I guess?
I'm just asking. I'm just asking. I mean, I'm asking because what I'm saying, I'm looking at what I, I mean, I'm just kind of seeing how my budget, if I need, if I can buy. Cause my understanding is at the beginning of the budget year, we got, you know, um, a lot of requests or whatever.
Sure.
And then I asked, uh, Mr. Angerstein to put all those requests in to the twenty twenty-six budget so we could look and see what, um, uh, what kind of monies we have for any items that was requested. So, and, and then he come back and said that we don't have the money to do it.
Well, we, as you can tell from even with the voter approval rate, no capital requests were funded in this budget. The only thing that got extra was for the streets.
So I was asking also, uh, oh, with this, with streets, but I see that, um, where did I got it here? Okay, the terms. Let me get it here. Those, um, that debt form that you gave me. The terms on that, on those, like the swimming pool or whatever?
Yes, ma'am.
On that right there, um, we're still paying a debt, paying a note on that tax note, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Why are we paying a tax note on that and we don't have a pool?
I mean, the money was borrowed to be put aside for a pool and the pool has not happened, been appropriated yet. But you still have to pay your debt based on what you borrowed the money for.
Well, how, what, what year, what year do we buy, what, what year do we borrow the money?
I would have to look back. That was before me. I'd have to look back.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking. And so we've been paying on that, along with that, I think we've been paying like two interest rates? So why are we paying like two interest rates on that, on that loan?
The interest rates, the interest rates drop, and if you can spread the interest rate payments out in years where you're paying two, it's really one payment, but you're, we're splitting it into two payments. That way the interest rates actually drop and pay less, that's more of those. That's typical for all of us that we do two years, break the payments.
Okay. Um, reason I, reason I ask, and I, because I was looking at everything and I was looking at the, uh, terms of how long it's going to take us to pay those debts.
Yes, ma'am.
So on each one of those, what's, what's the term limit?
Well, it depends on each one of those debts that was incurred by that council at the time and how they, they set that up. I mean, those are all council approved. I mean, and.
Yes, sir, but I just wonder how long, I.
And it depends. And, and so it depends on what the council saw was the, the right fit at that time for how those debts were set up.
Okay, so we don't, so we right, right now, so can you get me the term, terms, John, y'all know the terms of those, of those debts?
I have the, I have the information to, but there's, I think there's six or seven, uh, debt services in there. So they're all different. The, uh, the last payment for the swimming pool is this, uh, is this next budget that we pay off. And, um.
So what do we?
The rest of them are fifteen, somewhere between fifteen, fifteen years, something like that.
So what do we, with, with the swimming pool, what do we do with that money?
It's still sitting there. All, all the money has not been appropriated for the swimming pool because council hasn't come up with a agreement yet.
Uh, okay.
It's still sitting there, hasn't been spent.
Okay. Okay, then, uh, go ahead. Somebody else want to say something?
Well, anyway, I was just saying, one thing with the budget and where we are with it, even the items that were budgeted, they were all approved by the council. That's the designated part. And even the rates that they were approved at, they were approved by the council. So that made them constant. And that money, as you mentioned with the pool, it hasn't been touched, but you're still, you're paying it. And but it's, it probably to get what we want to accomplish, we know that the cost of things have gone up. But it doesn't bother the funding that was, it was appropriated for. So anything that was already previously appropriated, it's there. It's not going to be you. The only way it'll change direction, if you take that pool money, it would be by vote of the council coming back saying, we want this money designated for that. The interest rates and things might change with, with time. But what we're locked in in our budget is what you appropriated as a council and what was agreed upon. I mean, the, the fine details, and I appreciate you doing the fine detail, but the actual thing that we were looking at, there's no item that was in the budget. Cause we did cut back on the big capital expenses simply because we didn't have the funding. But what we were doing today on this part of it was trying to ascertain whether the voter approval rate is what, where we're trying to address. Is this what, it, it looks differently because when it was done, it wasn't done, the first one that we talked about in the last meeting, it was with no new revenue rate. And then we went to the voter approval rate.
Right.
And that did encompass, but it still didn't encompass all of the, uh, capital needs and all of the advanced needs. There were a lot of things that had to be compromised. PD didn't get what they wanted fully, but they did get something in different areas did it.
And like, and, and this is the public comment section on the actual budget itself here. And, and like I said, the, the excess or the extra that with the voter approval rate, that, those total dollars went to the streets for new streets, which the council thought was the priority. And so we were able to do that so we can have a good bit more street construction in next year's budget.
So, uh, I had mentioned, I think I had mentioned, um, I think at our last meeting that we may need to look at some items that we need to, um, possibly, uh, uh, remove from our budget so we can have the funding for our city. So my question is, and I don't know, maybe I'm not looking at it right or whatever. But my question is, I was looking at, cause I saw where we're talking about doing sinking funds and things like that. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering, and, and looking at the revenue and our, and our, and our debt. And if we were, and if our debt was called today, we only have six million and we have sixteen million in debt. So we, and then the four, four million, uh, that we have in utility, what is, what is that? The uti.
But the most.
The four million where?
The uti, well, I guess when we broke it down in this worksheet here that I have. We got, anyway, anyway, the way, the expense, minus that expense is, uh, six million, six hundred ninety-nine dollars, a thousand and eight hundred thirty-eight dollars. And then our revenue was six million, eight hundred seventy thousand dollars.
Which one are you looking at? Is that the?
Thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars. And that's what's giving us our one hundred seventy thousand?
I think you're.
Dollars.
Are you looking at separate? No, you're not looking at the, this one. This is the one.
Well, I, well.
This is the update.
Well, if that's the case, this should reflect.
This one is revised.
Okay, so if you.
Okay, this is the one that, that we're looking at.
Right.
And the one with the red highlight on it?
Right.
This is the budget that has been, been opposed, proposed, the actual, the budgeted and the proposed budget. Pull out this, that was the one that has, that's been changed.
Yeah.
So you're actually looking at.
This is your proposed budget right here, the one under this red line down through here. And that's the proposed twenty twenty-six budget.
Yeah, that's the.
But if I can say something, as far as like debts being called, if we.
Anybody.
Individuals or, or companies like Live Oak, if, if, if we lived in fear of our debts being called, every time we go to borrow money, normally it's because we don't have it right now, and so we borrow it. And if that debt was called, we'd be in trouble, you know, everybody would. So we, we can't look at things as, as if it was called because, I mean, look at the United States of America. What if his debts were called? I mean, we, you know.
There's not a city in the United States that don't have debt.
We're working, yeah, that's why you budget what you can make the year. That's why it's done from year to year to make sure that you.
But, but that's why we have the credit rating we do though, is because we're very solid in terms of our, our assets compared to our debt. And so we wouldn't have the credit rating we have as a city if, and because of, we have a very limited amount of debt for a city our size and a budget our size.
So, so basically you're saying, so if something actually happens to where, I mean, so we're in, in a position right now so we can't budget or, or do anything really. Because if something happens and we're only getting six million dollars, uh, six million dollars and we're in a sixteen billion dollar debt. And then you have another car that you want to purchase or something like that, then we have more debt. We keep adding the debt. So the interest on those debts, and what I'm looking at is that, and this is what I'm looking at, is that we're paying interest, a lot of interest, but we're not paying a lot on the principal. So that means that we're not making any hedge weight. And we'll be paying a whole lot of interest and we'll be in debt.
There's terms.
For a whole long of.
There's terms on this.
Yeah, that term.
So if it's, if it's set up for five years, it'll be paid off in five years. If it's set up in four years, it'll be paid off in four years.
But we don't know how long they're set up for.
Yes, we do. I just don't have that list in front of me because we were looking at the budget and the tax rate tonight, not the, the debt service side. I, I gave you all that the other day and so that's where, and each one of those.
That's one of my papers.
And, and so we went over that. And so I was not prepared to have that in front of me because we were talking about the budget itself. And then we're going to talk about the tax rate. But I can get with you and show you the terms of each one of the notes individually and be happy to do that.
Okay, and then, um, also I, my, the, um, and on the revised version, why it was actually, um, the decreases and the increases and things like that were changed. But I mean, I just, I, I think that for me, just looking at it, trying to figure the things out, it just looks like to me that we are in a, a financial, um.
I would say we're financially as strong as we've been in years to honestly answer your question.
Well, only reason I could not say that because we don't know all of the details for is our financial position. We don't have our statements, bank statements, uh, we don't know where all of our, um, financial assets are.
There it is. There it is.
Those are the, I think that-
No, 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 no.
I would, I would propose, when you have an audit, I, I just said, when the audit comes in,
Okay.
That's one of the ones that would determine whether it lines up, if it's any discrepancy in, in any of your stuff, your audit, that's why you have, we pay every year to have an audit, to make sure that we're on track.
And there was-
And this is the way, and anything that you find out of order in that audit, it'll have to be revised and, and addressed. And according to our audit, we had a clean audit. And so, and even, and I think what you're saying, cities operate on borrowing money. That's, that is the way they function, in a city, in the United States. It's kinda like we do in our personal business. You get a car, most of the time you don't own the whole car, you have a note to go with it. And so what the budget reflects is that, are we in good standing? Are we able to make our bill and our obligation for that year? That's why every year we revisit it, and this proposed budget will allow us to meet our obligation, and we're in really high standing in terms of our ability to borrow or, to meet. But if any corporation, if everybody was called in, even having worked with the school, we had to pay off every grant, everything at, on that day, nobody would prob, I don't know, anyone, corporation that could probably meet those obligations like that. But it has to be, that's why they do them on terms. And so the city is set up in the same process, that you will be borrowing money. As long as you have a city, you would never have the full revenue to do it. Because you can look at our tax rate, we get how much it costs to do a few, our street, we'll never have enough to budget, that's why we, we, we're able to borrow money and then we do the voter to balance it out. But nothing in this city will basically run fully if you're gonna get, address it without having to borrow money and funding.
Well, another thing too-
And so what the proposed rate is, the question was, you know, are we, we have a budget that if we go to the voter approval rate, we would be able to increase some of the things that we were doing efficiently and more effectively. But we would never have enough money as a city looking at our tax rate without borrowing money. And that's how the city is set up. And the previous thing, I know you brought up some issue, how they had been in the past and what the funding was. If it's designated for that area, it has to be used in that area, or else it has to come back to the council, and they would have to decide that they want to disperse that money in another way. Nothing is arbitrarily moved around without the approval of the council.
Another way to look at that, Mayor, though, also, is this, is if we had the finances on hand to, i- if our debts were called and we had that surplus, our citizens would be wondering, what are we doing with that, why aren't we fixing this, why aren't we doing that, why aren't we doing this? So, you know, it's, you, you have to look at it also from that, from that standpoint as well.
Well, my-
And you could keep that, you could keep that in case it was called and never do anything with it. You know, and, and how foolish would that look?
So basically, if any, just say, so basically, to answer to my question, if anything was called, we would not be able to take care of that, right?
We would be able to make arrangements, that's what you do, you make arrangements. Uh, are we still in the-
Yeah, put, enclose it, if nobody else, if nobody else has any comments.
What?
We enclose the public hearing.
Oh, I have another question.
Oh, he had a, oh, I got it.
Yeah, on our, uh, oh, and this is the voter approval rate. Another thing, uh, just kinda, just let the record reflect, I had, I saw where, um, where, where, oh, that's where I want to know, is, uh, there's my-
Those are changed, this is the one that the sheet, the budget workshop sheet that you need to refer to.
Well, that's the problem.
Anything that was on those previous sheets.
So, so Crockett Economic Development, so, um,
This is, it has, it has to be taken from this one. Final line, I don't know.
Okay.
While you're looking, uh, at that, looking for it, we're-
Okay.
While you're, uh, it was-
Unless there's some other comment from the public.
It was one, uh, I think Mr. Shelley had a, he raised his hand, we're still on the-
Public hearing, yes ma'am.
Yes, he had a statement.
In order for me to understand, I was on the finance committee for our city, and with that committee, we met on a regular basis to be able to understand that the budget is a working document, most definitely. It's always that. And if there is a problem you come up with, then you, the council, as well as the finance director and you member else, will massage that budget up or down, depending on the revenue sources that you have, or not revenue sources if you have. So it's kinda one of those situations where if you have questions with it, you're correct, but if there becomes a problem, then you're gonna either reduce it, or you might even have the opportunity to increase. And I think that's a simple way of putting it, and I, uh-
No, you're, you're an auditor, thank you.
And so, you know, the one thing that I can always say to you also is, a finance committee really does help the council. One or two members serving on that, and then, you know, in, in a meeting with your auditors on a regular basis, you'll be able to ke, come back on at least by the quarter and find out where that budget stands at that particular time. Are you up, down, in the middle, and so forth, so it's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you, and with him saying that, I had, uh, also talked with Mr. Stanley also, so we can get, um, uh, finance reports monthly, so we can keep up with items like that, but, um, but I'm, I'm at the point to where, um, a lot of the, uh, far as the finances and the discussion of the finances, uh, being that we're fiduciary responsible for, for the finances, or only getting, I guess, spoken with, with certain council members. So I would love to be involved in the conversation.
Sure.
Especially if I'm gonna be held accountable.
Yes ma'am, not a problem.
I mean, it's open for you if you have a question, any council, if they have a question for the city manager. Okay, are you?
Another thing I think we have, the, uh, you, I see where you have the election, the charter election. Okay, we have not, um, discussed that, so this is what I, I wanna say. I wanna let the record reflect that the City of Crockett Charter was written before the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, and reprinted February nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy. We, the council as a body, have not-
Wait, excuse me, let me ask you something. Let me, excuse me, let me ask you something.
This is about the audit.
Okay, the audit?
This is about, and it's on this, on the audit, it's on the budget.
Okay, well, you're asking about the budget, okay.
It's about the budget, because it's on here, okay, so I'm gonna start over.
No, you don't have to start, we're-
Yes ma'am. Let, let, let the record reflect that the City of Crockett Charter was written before the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, and reprinted February nineteen ninety-seven. We, the council as a body, have not had a workshop or to review any charter revisions discussed, nor made any necessary changes, or approved any amendments, uh, that the revision, uh, on any revisions of the Home Rule Charter from the Charter Revision Committee. In my opinion, I do not want, um, to do anything directly or indirectly that will cause the city to be liable. So therefore, I want to, um, allow, do not want to allow anyone to set us up for failure. In my opinion, we as the council need to ensure the charter is fair and show equality for all people according to the Texas Institute Constitution, state law, and rules, local government, and comply with the old home charter by law.
As far as the-
Wait, let, oh, I'm sorry, let me address that.
So with that being said-
Uh, wait a minute, let me address that. I know you brought in the part about the charter, but that's, that's really not related to where we are with the budget. The charter is an existing organization that, I mean, an event that they're working on, and you've already studied what your concerns was about this. But we're, right now, we're gonna stay focused on the budget, and-
Right, and what I'm saying is, the, but, we haven't, we haven't discussed, what I'm saying is, we have not discussed, uh, a charter election or anything, but it's in here, but we have not discussed-
Let me explain, let me explain. The past council approved the charter commission, which included the election. And so that has to be planned for in a budget. If we get the charter commission to meet with the council, go through the workshop, we have to have funds in the budget for that election when that happens, which was approved by the council.
But I want to make sure that we actually had a workshop before that happened.
Yes ma'am, you will.
Because previously, we have been, as a council, will get, uh, uh, will have a city manager to put an item on the agenda that has not been brought before the council to approve, to, uh, move forward with.
Well, you, there's a workshop planned, so-
Okay, well, anyway, okay, that has been addressed. Okay, at this time, we're closing the public hearing. Okay, and we move to number four.
Number four.
Number, uh, number four, consider an approving ordinance making appropriation for the support of the City of Crockett for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-six, appropriating money to sinking fund to pay interest and principal due on the city's indebtedness, and, uh, adopting the annual budget of the City of Crockett for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Basically, we're adopting this budget based on, um, the voter approval rate, which was proposed by council at the last meeting, and, um, that's what, what we just had the public hearing on.
Okay, so now the money in the sinking fund to pay interest?
Okay, we're doing-
Yeah, yeah, it's the, that's the, the budget is based on the voter approval rate, which is point six eight oh eight per hundred, which is the M and O rate of point five one nine four, and the INS rate of point one six three oh, which adds up to the point six eight oh eight. That's what this budget is based on, those numbers. Which we will talk about the tax rate in the far, next agenda part. But this is for just approving the actual appropriations of the budget.
So, so then, uh, everything goes into the sinking fund?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so basically, uh, it goes into the sinking fund, and then the interest from that sinking fund pays the expenditures?
Well, you have your M and O rate that's paying part of the budget, then you have your INS rate that pays another portion. So your total adds up to the point six eight oh eight for your budget.
I make a motion we approve the ordinance.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in, in second hall in favor. Okay, motion carries. Okay, number five. Public hearing on twenty twenty-five tax rate. We're open?
Mayor and council, um, as we discussed a little bit in the previous public hearing, the council proposed the voter approval rate at the last meeting, which we created our budget from, which is the zero point six eight oh eight per hundred. And the public has-
Any comments from the public? No comment? Okay, we're closing the hearing.
All right, I have a comment. Uh, just, uh, just to say, I would just like to, um, make sure that we're, we're definitely in good standing, um, to go back over this with me, um, but I do want to state that, from me looking at the numbers, that I think we're in a financial hardship, and that's me, that's in my opinion, so I just want to share that with you.
If there's nothing else on the hearing, the hearing is officially closed, okay? And that might bring us to item number six, consider an approving ordinance levying and ed valorem taxes for the use and the support of the municipal government of the City of Crockett for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, providing for appro, appropriating each levy for specific purposes and providing when taxes shall become due and when same become delinquent if not paid. I'll do-
This is basically approving the tax rate.
Okay, I know it's a fancy way of saying it.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, we're up.
Make a motion we approve, uh, approve, is that right?
Tax rate.
Yeah, approve our tax rate, twenty twenty-six?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor? Motion carries. Brings us to item number seven, consider an approved twenty twenty-five tax roll.
Um, mayor and council, that was basically the list, the eight hundred and sixty-two pages of everybody that's literally on the tax roll. You know, and I provided the opportunity for you to go through that, and just a reminder, when we do approve it at the close of the meeting tonight, everybody has a signature block on that, so we need to get signatures from that when you approve the tax roll, please.
Considering approved, so-
We need a motion, yes please.
I make a motion we approve the twenty twenty-five tax roll.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, item number eight, consider an approved facility use agreement between the City of Crockett and the Crockett Area Chamber of Commerce.
Mayor and council, we've got some organizations that are, that use city facilities and, and so some of them we don't have facility use agreements with, and we need to kinda tidy that up. So the first one we're gonna do is with the chamber, and I'll put that in your packet. I sent it to legal counsel for approval as well, and it basically sets out the terms for the chamber to use the office space that they have at the civic center for a monthly rent, plus their portion of the internet, plus they're providing in-kind services for telephones and, and, because we have city staff at the civic center as well, plus they will, it just expands our personnel being at that facility at all times with somebody for the city. But it just basically gets us legal, and it doesn't appear that we're gifting any public funds or anything else, and we have actual facility use agreement with the Chamber of Commerce, Commerce for their use of our facility.
I know that we've been looking at this for a while, with each organization that's using it, we really hadn't spelled out what their optional responsibility, I think this is a, even though we're hoping that this would address the need, but if not, this is a starting point that you have to invite-
And this is the first of, we've got several more to come, but this is the first one and the easiest one to work out the logistics and details of.
So you say on the in-kind services, um, so that's an exchange?
It's an exchange, and instead of pure dollars for rent, they will provide their employees answering the phone for us and other things, which would be a cost to the city if they weren't there at some points, and so-
So we don't have anyone here to answer the phones, or?
It, it's at the civic center. Their office space is at the civic center.
I mean-
Yeah, at that front desk, they're actually taking care of the answering, and we will, we don't have to buy-
And walk-in traffic as well.
Yeah, because people come there, and so we're not having a hired person, but because they're using it, we're matching kind.
Yes ma'am, plus they are paying a portion of the rent and their, their third of the internet for that facility.
So people have, people have a question, they gotta go to the civic center?
For the chamber, yes, and we have some employees at the civic center too.
Well, like if somebody wants to rent the civic center, they'll go out there, but then they'll, they'll be able to talk to them and put them in the right person to go to.
Right.
Because the problem has been, people say, "I'll go over there and nobody helps me." Well, and then they call me, but-
And so the rent amount, the rent?
It's three hundred.
Three hundred dollars, it's in here.
Okay.
There's a payment, it's all.
Okay, so, just, just, just a question, just a question, so is there a difference between asking them to pay three hundred dollars and we charge economic development eight hundred? What is the difference?
The, the economic development never paid rent.
They never paid rent?
Never paid rent.
Well, we have it on our-
Because this is what I'm saying, is we, we had set those up, but we never had the facility use agreements actually approved and put in place. This is the first one that's actually getting approved and put in place. This will be the first legal one put in place.
So you put eight hundred dollars on the budget and we never paid it?
That was probably, you're looking at the budgeted from last year that never got agreed upon. That is not in this year's budget, that's in twenty, last year's budget was what was proposed, that we never got dollars from.
Well, we're comparing apples and oranges now, economic development no longer exists, it, what they're doing is setting up-
Okay, they put eight hundred dollars on here.
Economic develop, there was never the full form or-
They, they were not going to- They, they were not going to provide in-kind services either. That was not part of the agreement. This one is rent plus in-kind services. Economic development was just paying a straight rent fee.
Okay, hold on. So you said, now you said that they never paid anything?
No, ma'am. They, they, they never paid in terms of rent. They did put some money towards some furniture and other things out there, but they never paid direct rent.
And from where we are now, everybody that's using the facility is going to be given an agreement so that we don't have this conflict anymore, even though...
How many rooms out there?
They use...
They just use, they're using one space.
One space.
When you come into the front, they're using a space in there, at the reception area, right in there. And then it'll be other people that are in there.
Our city employees take up one, two, three, four offices, and they've got the, the, the actual foyer area, and then there's one office space for their executive.
So they're the only one paying rent?
Yes, because our employees are out there, but we're not charging ourselves for it.
City employees.
Yeah, it's city employees and then the one chamber.
Uh, are there any other question on the facility use agreement? With the area, with the City of Crockett and Crockett Area Chamber of Commerce?
I make a motion, we approve the agreement.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor? Okay, motion carries.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
All right. Oh, that was, that was the end of the page.
We can get you one.
Oh, yeah, we got to sign. We got something.